Okay, we're now recording. So we just came back into public from our non-public session. Just for myself, it is 7:39 PM. Oops, hold on, I'm trying to close this chat window so nobody has to look at it. There we go. Um, okay, bear with me for one moment. I have just a little blurb to read. As Chair of the Windham School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order number 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically in accordance with the emergency order and providing public access to the meeting by video and email. Utilizing Zoom for this meeting, all members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and participate via Zoom or email us at wsb@windhamsd.org. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting using Zoom. If anyone has a problem, please again email us at wsb@windhamsd.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. All votes will be taken by roll call vote. That being said, with the number of you in here and still looking to be admitted, I would say it is safe to say the public does have access to the meeting. I don't think we are in any danger there. And so, welcome back. As I said, we have just come out of a non-public. This meeting is being recorded. Slight adjustment to the agenda. Because none of us have the American flag available to us, we will forego the pledge tonight. And in its place, in that line of the agenda, we're going to have our school district moderator, Betty Dunn, speak about deliberative. And so Betty, if you would unmute, the floor is yours, please.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. I, we've already had some discussions about deliberative session and how the setup should be, but I think it's pretty finalized at this point. Just so you know, the municipal association and actually even this year, the school boards association is putting out information to moderators and training to moderators about how to deal with deliberative sessions in COVID. And we are incredibly lucky and I know I'm very grateful that we have a facility, namely the Salem, I mean, the Windham High School, that will allow us basically have our regular style meeting in the high school with social distancing. If we have an attendance that is like past years, when there was nothing significantly controversial on the ballot, we will be able to do social distancing, I think, without any difficulty. I have spoken with Shannon and with the superintendent and with some of the audio and technical people about how to set this up. We can set it up such that all the officials are going to be adequately socially distanced and still have a screen to display things up. Friday afternoon, we're going to do a test of the system to make sure that we can also do Zoom. People will listen to the media on cable or streaming as they normally would. And the purpose of the Zoom really is in case there are people who do not wish to come to the meeting, who are residents or voters and wish to make some kind of comment or ask a question, we will have the ability to do that at that time. I have some notes that I want to make sure I cover.
Of course.
Anyone entering the auditorium must wear a mask. And if you're around during election time, the recent November election time, you will know that I was one of the enforcers of that and I will be an enforcer. And that means a mask over your nose and your mouth at all times. In actuality, we're going to hopefully wire this up so that everybody has a microphone so that it can be heard even through a mask. You do not need to take the mask off in order to be heard. The guidance that we've received from the state organizations, not the state itself, but the organizations, is that we should have a place where people who feel they cannot wear a mask can go and be present. So we are going to set up a separate room with a screen and a microphone. People will be able to be there. If our experience at voting in November is indicative of what we would have there, I expect that there will be no one there. But since we're required to do that, we will get that set up. One thing that is important for people to know, though, is because this is an in-person meeting, it is not the same as your Zoom meeting tonight where you can vote online. The state law that allows this and the guidance from all of the people that I've been listening to says that we can't, in order to make an amendment or in order to take a vote, you have to be present. So if you plan to do that, and I don't foresee one at this point, but if you plan to do that, you should be there. Now occasionally, we'll have votes that are just pretty minimal, what I would call procedural, like move to close debate on a question, move to restrict reconsideration on a question. Those people who are present can vote on that. If you're not there, you don't get to vote on it. If there becomes something that is really, really substantive, which is highly unlikely as I see it, we, again, the people who are there in the auditorium are the people who determine how the meeting is run. So I would, at that point, suggest if we needed to have an actual paper ballot or significant vote, I would ask that we do something like extend the voting time for an hour so that people who are listening could come down. I hope we don't have to do that because it would be a time and logistical challenge, let's say, but it's possible. So plan that if you want to make an amendment, you want to make a substantive motion, you should be there and you should be able to do it with some social distancing. So those are the things that I wanted to cover and I also wanted to be available if people had any questions.
Okay, thank you. Change my view here, just so I could see. So, um, so in order to, we generally reserve questions to our public comments sections, which will come a little later. However, to not detain Mrs. Dunn for too long, if anybody had a question strictly related to the deliberative session, which is this coming Friday, 7:00 PM at Wyndham High School in the auditorium, as Betty mentioned, now I, we would entertain any questions or statements or anything now strictly for deliberative. So if you have one, go ahead and raise your hand or speak up in some way. Okay, I think, I think it looks like everybody is satisfied. So that being said, yes, thank you for coming on and speaking to this, Betty, and we will get all of the technology, as you mentioned. We're going to make sure we're all functioning early Friday afternoon, so that comes 7:00 PM, we're ready to roll. And we look forward to seeing you then.
Okay.
Thank you, Betty. Appreciate it.
Bye-bye. See you Friday night.
Thank you. Okay, so, that being said, if anybody has any questions about deliberative later on, don't hesitate to reach out to the board and we'll happily get you whatever answers you need. I know we will have access to a document Betty is currently putting together, which is an annual guide to the deliberative session. This year, it'll look a little bit different because of the COVID differences that are going to play a role, but all of that is and will be put together and available to answer any questions you may have. Um, okay, so now we will move on to our consent agenda. We don't have manifest to be read into the record since we're over Zoom, so we're going to skip number one. And Rob will, if you don't mind, read in nominations, resignations, and retirements. Then we have budget transfers in minutes. So how about we get a motion to start with for approval of items two, three, and four on the consent agenda?
Now make a motion to approve items two, three, and four with any amendments to the minutes.
Okay, we have them. Okay, motion by Cindy, second by Rob, and then Rob, if you don't mind taking those number two items?
Sure, just a couple. To whom may concern, this letter is to inform you of my resignation effective Friday, February 12th, 2021. It is with a heavy heart that I leave the Windham School District as so many great memories have been made with so many people. However, I have been granted an opportunity that I cannot pass up financially speaking, and I hope to be as lucky in my future as I have felt both at Windham Middle School and Goldenbrook School. Thank you for the memories, Charlene Souza, RNBSN, School nearest Goldenbrook School. Dear Superintendent Langlois, the purpose of this letter is to provide my intent to retire from my position as classroom teacher as of June 2022. This notification is accordance with Article 15 of the current CBA guidelines under this same article. I understand that I may reconsider this plan of retirement up until December of 2021. Please advise me of any other documentation you may need to facilitate this process. If you have any questions, please contact me. Sincerely, Linda Sakwich. And that is it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Were there any questions related to the budget transfers from the board?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none. Were there any corrections to the minutes from the board?
Yeah, just, just one. The minutes were fine. This was, if I can find it on my other computer, should have been the January 19th, 2021 school board meeting. And, hang on a second, I gotta find it. Well, anyway. There it is. So January 19th, 2021, school board meeting on line 39, we were discussing Article Six, Capital Needs and Building and Grounds Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. And it gave all the information about what was left in the funds and about what the fund was for, but it didn't give a price. So I just wanted us to clarify that it was actually in the video of the meeting, we did say that we were requesting $200,000 to be added to the fund. It just wasn't included in the minutes. So I was kind of hoping, I know Marian did these minutes, I was kind of hoping we could just add that in there so if people read the minutes, they'd know what the request was for. That was it.
Okay, sounds good. Um, I personally didn't have, and I know we have to take a vote, I personally didn't have any correspondence, though, so unless anybody else did, we'll be able to go ahead and skip letter D. But getting back to taking the official vote on the consent agenda, we're going to do a roll call. So Cindy?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Chair says aye, so consent agenda passes 4-0 with the minute amendment. Okay, the, did anybody else have any correspondence? I was getting a little out of myself. Hearing none, okay. We'll move on to presentations. And our first presentation will be from Brenda Morrow, principal of Wyndham Middle School, but then we're going to add a second item, which will be Dr. Erin Hagerty, and we'll get to that item, but just giving you a heads up, that'll be the, the order in which we, we take that as long as there's no, as long as the board is okay with that amendment. Okay, so Mrs. Morrow, we will turn the floor over to you, please.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. The reason I've come to you this evening is actually back then, we cancel our field trip to Camp Cody this year. It was an overnight field trip that was planned for our seventh graders that we had moved due to COVID from the fall to the spring, to March, but with the uncertainty of everything still going on, we're asking to cancel this trip for this school year.
That's too bad.
Yep, we do have it planned. We definitely want to go again. We had it planned for October of next year, but of course, it's for a different set of students, so before the seventh grade. We are looking into having some team building challenge days towards the end of the school year, hopefully where we can be outside and socially distanced and make some plans for some fun activities for the students that they would have done down at Camp Cody or up at Camp Cody, but due to the nature, we just don't feel that it's a safe option for us to do an overnight field trip.
Good call.
Any, any questions or anything from the board regarding Brenda's plan or why? I mean, I think, you know, we do all understand the situation, but want to give an opportunity for questions or comments if there are any. Okay. Seeing and hearing none. Um, just let me see, is, you did you, action item? So we don't actually have this listed as an action item. We could go ahead and give a board consensus if the board is comfortable with the cancellation. Sam, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Rob?
Absolutely.
Cindy, you okay with it?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's not an approval for a field trip, so I think a consensus is fine and it's just the way things are right now.
Okay, so, and, and again, it's unfortunate that the, the students will miss out this year, but again, health and safety has to be the priority so that future opportunities can be enjoyed. So that being said, Brenda, the board is fine, understands the, the need to cancel and to go ahead and do that.
Okay, thank you. And I will be coming to you later this year with the field trip proposal for next year to go in the fall, once we solidify the dates and the price of what it will be the cost of the trip. So that'll be coming because we certainly don't want to give up on this type of field trip.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for, for coming out tonight and, and waiting for us to get here, so thank you. Okay, the next item will be Dr. Hagerty, and I'll just let Dr. Hagerty speak to it. So Erin, did you want to share your screen?
Um, I can, Madam Chair, just to show that first paragraph, just to confirm to the board and get a consensus. Sure, absolutely, I can do that.
Let me know if you have any issues. I don't know if I need to give you permission or if you're all set.
Okay, hang on one second. Right, I should be.
All right. Perfect.
All right. Yes, absolutely. So in the superintendent's letter from last week, it was explained that we will be exploring the possibility of a full in-person return for some of our grades as we progress throughout the school year. The first grade that we're going to be exploring is to bring back our 12th grade students. And again, we are definitely still exploring this possibility and I'm just going to scroll down a little bit more into the survey. So this is what the, what the questionnaire would look like going out to parents. So exploring the possibility of a full in-person return for grade 12 students, and this is what parents would see. Please take a moment to provide the district with the following information. You will receive one email with one link per 12th grade student. You have enrolled in the district. This is very uniform as to the other questionnaires that we have sent out. So in this paragraph below, I think the most important thing to remember is to reiterate what Madam Chair just said, health and safety is our primary concern. The size of our buildings has not changed, the size of our classes have not changed as opposed to what we were looking at in the end of the summer, beginning of the fall. So we are exploring this possibility. We absolutely are going to need the correct balance of in-person versus full remote learners, but we, we want to try again. We want to see, you know, what our numbers come out to be. So we were looking to send out this survey this coming Wednesday, and with it being due back a week later, which would be February 10th, we would then turn around within a week to provide communication to the community to let them know if this possibility is doable or if we're still not able to get those percentages to the correct amount to be able to safely bring our in-person learners back. Madam Chair, would you like me to read this or is everyone okay just reading it independently?
Um, why don't you go ahead and read it? Thank you.
So the Wyndham School District is exploring the possibility of a full in-person return for our 12th grade students if the correct balance of in-person and full remote learners allows us to do so safely. We cannot guarantee that this option is possible, but we would like to collect data on your learning model preference. The selection you make for your student on this survey would lock them into the model for the remainder of quarter three. Further communication from the district will be released on Wednesday, February 17th, once we have collected the data needed to make this decision. If we are able to pursue this option, 12th grade students will return to full in-person learning at the beginning of March. If we are unable to implement this possibility, your student will continue in the model they are currently in. Please submit this form by Wednesday, February 10th at 5:00 PM. It is imperative that we receive a response from each 12th grade student. If we do not receive a response, we will add that student to the full in-person return model option. And the reason we need to do that is if we do not receive communication, we will, of course, if a student, if we have not received feedback from a full remote student, we can easily reach out to that student saying, would you like to stay in the full remote model? Then we can make that adjustment accordingly. If we have not received feedback from another student, we need to err on the side of caution, thinking that they're going to want to go into that in-person model because we can't err, you know, we, we need to err on the side of caution because if we don't, our percentages will not be correct.
Um, any, do you have anything else to present related to this?
Um, no, but I, I think that we were just looking for, for a consensus on the dates. If the dates were okay to send out this Wednesday, do back the following, and then a week after that, we would communicate whether this possibility is a go or if, if we need to, you know, kind of suspend this possibility.
Can I, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Just going forward, this is the template that we're going to use so that when we decide to apply it to, say, Goldenbrook or Center School, you're just going to use the same terminology, change and change the dates and the grades, right?
Correct.
So we don't really have to have you present to us in the future. We've seen this and this is what it's going to be.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Um, Rob or Sam, did you have any questions for Dr. Hagerty?
I'll defer to Dr. Falsetti.
Thank you, Mr. Bren. No, I mean, Dr. Hagerty, this is great, thank you. I just, you know, my question on this is, you know, we did these preference surveys before. What, what percentage of our population currently is in a full remote model for senior year anyway?
So for seniors, we actually have a high, a high percentage. So we have 230 students in the class, we have 86 full remote learners.
Oh, wow.
So we, we did them, so it's over 30%. So we did the math and if, if we were to say, okay, hey, tomorrow, based upon our current numbers, could we bring back the 12th grade class? If our current hybrid is turned into an in-person and our full remote learners stayed full remote, we could make it work with some adjustments based because we have that, we're, we're to that percentage breakout where we have enough full remote learners or students who want to be in the full remote learning model that we do have space available in the classrooms.
Okay. Is, is that then why we're starting with, with 12th grade because of that higher percentage? Is that, just kind of curious why we're starting with 12th grade first? I could make some assumptions, but.
So we wanted to, so we, we talked at the SAU level and really felt as though our 12th graders last year missed out on so much. We want to try to, we need numbers currently, so yes, that, that was definitely something that we looked at, seeing if it'd be comfortable to bring them back for the remainder of the school year so they could enjoy some of those activities that our, our 12th graders last year missed out on.
Okay, thanks. No, that makes sense to me. I figured it was exactly that. Good to hear. And I guess the other question, you know, would you expect any people, you know, last time I know we ran this, there was also this issue of, you know, well, I, I would take hybrid, but if it was full in-person, I might go remote because I'm uncomfortable. And we got into this back and forth on the survey with people in the community where they didn't feel that the way, you know, like, they would err on the side of caution because of other people's choices, but not necessarily because of their own. You know, it sounds to me like, I just want to get your thoughts on that eventuality on this one as well, you know?
So in, I mean, just, just being realistic, I think absolutely if a parent is not comfortable with a full five-day return, they would, they would flip to the full remote model. I think one, one advantage we may have at this point as opposed to when we were just looking at these in the summer is that students have had the opportunity to experience the hybrid, they've had the experience, you know, they've been able to experience the remote model. So maybe saying, hey, I absolutely want a full in-person because I've experienced the other two, maybe that might help with the decision-making, but I would expect just, you know, there would be some students that would, you know, choose full remote for safety purposes or other concerns than the full five day.
And in terms of the overall impact, because obviously this, this doesn't just impact the seniors, they'll be mixed in with juniors on classes, sophomores, you know? But in terms, if we were to return the full amount of the senior class who's currently in-person hybrid to a full in-person, what does that do from an occupancy percentage? Just because that might help other people in the public understand the impact of it on their own kids in ninth, 10th, 11th grade and maybe understand for us as a board and for the public, what the kind of actual impact that is?
Sure, absolutely. So I spent some time with Julie Lickman at the high school and we went through majority of, a senior either takes a, a senior class or they're mixed with juniors and seniors. Very rarely is there ever a sophomore, junior, senior mix. I will say that when we did run the numbers, the classes would be to capacity for the most part. So if, if, you know, in the capacity for the high school on average was 18 students per class, and that again is an average, so there were some one-offs with, you know, with just classroom sizes and a little bit of uniqueness, but it's generally 18 students per class. And if we did have those hybrid turn into full person, the classrooms would be at capacity for the most part.
And so I, I guess my next question on this is, and I know that we have some kids who've had difficulty with full in-person who are maybe on IEPs or, you know, full, like with the remote days on hybrid are now in for like temporarily or longer term, five days in-person at some of the lower schools, I'm assuming probably at the high school as well, but you know, would this decision be just for the 12th graders? Would you anticipate utilizing that percentage? Because you could, you know, load up, I guess, an extra, what, 130 or so students in the building and still be at capacity? Would you use this just for the senior class or would you prefer to use this to return more high-risk or more at-risk, need kiddos through all four grades back to the school instead of a particular grade? Or is that done and converted into the models that we've already accounted for those kids?
Right, so right now, currently, we do have the opportunity for IEP students and 504 students and particular students that are part of the SST program to come in five days based upon their needs and what their case managers and teams feel that is best available for them. That is an option now, and we actually do have some IEP and 504. That is an option now and we actually do have some IEP and 504 students that aren't taking advantage of that for whatever reason, comfort level, or it's just not the best fit for their plan. So I think we have that available now for those populations and we're comfortable with those numbers. I'm not, I'm not sure if we were talking about other populations. I think we need to explore that a little bit more because I would never want to rule out one population over another. Because I think it's important for all students to be back in as much as possible.
Yeah, and I mean, I asked that just because I've had parents, but I know mostly folks in, you know, lower grades and only have high school where they have reached out to me to say, you know, hey, I'd really love to get my kid back in school five days a week because of, you know, really low grades, because of really, you know, social, emotional issues, mental health issues. And so I just want to make sure that we're capturing people from a need perspective. I'd love to put all the seniors back in, don't get me wrong. But, you know, I'm worried about, you know, if we had that capacity, is it, are there kids that we're missing that are really high need? Are going to really suffer, you know, especially for kids. There'll be other parents who say, hey, I need my 10th or 11th grader in because of college, you know, admission requirements and all this. So they really need to get their grades up. Why are they not being offered this, you know? Understand what the seniors need, but you know, how do we prioritize the needs within the high school, I guess, or other school districts? But this is specific to this building.
And Chair?
Yes, Rob.
Just a question for Dr. Hagerty. So the last line, if we do not receive a response, we'll add that soon to the full in-person return model option. So just curious why that was chosen as opposed to if we don't receive a response, we'll put you in remote?
So we could have gone the other way. I think that assuming that a student wants to be full remote was a more restrictive option, Rob. So I just went and having a student be full remote would, or placing a student in full remote that does not respond would truly help our numbers. But I'm not sure if choosing to say a student is going to be full remote just because you didn't respond on a questionnaire is kind of the best path we want to go on. So we just said that it could be an assumption that they would be a full in-person and we would allocate them to those numbers.
Totally understand, although I find that, you know, there might be more of an incentive to respond if it's done the other way. But so let's assume that, right? Let's assume that there's X number of students that, you know, don't respond and so you add them into the in-person return model. So, you know, do we, are we 100% confident that that wouldn't put us in a situation where we'd say, well, you know, based on the ones that have responded that they want full in-time and the ones that didn't respond and so we're throwing them in that bucket, we may have too many kids in at one time. And if that happens, wouldn't that, you know, deprive the ones that really do want to be in school every day the opportunity to do it if we determine that, you know, just be too many?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna be extremely optimistic and hoping that we're talking about this this evening on the school board meeting, that when 12th grade parents receive the survey on Wednesday, they'll be very quick to turn around and let us know what they'd like for their students.
Yeah, I get that, but I'm just saying, do you think that if they don't, do you think that the number of people that you add into the in-person just because they didn't respond will get our in-person numbers to the point where it wouldn't be feasible to do it safely?
So it's always a possibility, but I think that depending on who those students are, again, if we know that a student was not responding, is currently full remote, we would seek out that student and say, do you want to stay full remote?
So I guess for me then, the message to the 12th grade students and parents out there is please respond. Please respond so that we have an accurate depiction of what things are going to look like so that we don't get into a situation where we've got a lot of people that want to come back and we just can't make it happen because we've got too many numbers of students. And part of it is because there was a lack of response. So thank you.
Okay, sure.
And then Erin, following this, we have public comments. So I think one question you're likely to get, so if you could just speak to it, would be, when do you, well, I'm pointing to you because obviously you're the one presenting this. I understand it's administrative and board discussion decision. But overall, when are, when is the school district kind of looking at, taking a look at the other schools and grades for a possible full return in some, if not all of them? I mean, some of our schools, at least one, is extremely tight on space. You know, so that one makes me not as optimistic for that one. But when would we be taking a look at the other schools and grades?
Sure, absolutely, Madam Chair. We would be looking at those other schools and grades to make a return, a possible return for trimester three. So we're going to start exploring after February vacation, very beginning of March, sending out some more surveys and doing some more exploration if we can bring those younger grades in. So we'd be looking at grades three and four for Goldenbrook. And we'll be sending out an individual question. We're going to do the same for Center School, grades five and six, and the same for middle school, grades seven and eight.
And again, for transparency to the parents watching, or I shouldn't even say transparency, but for clarification, you know, we're still in, and this was pointed out earlier, but we're still in the same situation where our building sizes haven't changed and we still need to social distance. So the results of the survey are 100% going to determine if it's even possible. So there's a chance that, you know, given the fact that, again, the buildings haven't changed and we still need to social distance and do the masks and all the other, you know, mitigating things that we're doing, there's a chance we're not at a point where any grades can come back yet. However, knowing how critical, you know, in-person learning is, we need to at least start exploring the possibility of returning some, if not all, you know, to this in-person learning five days a week when and where possible. So just to be very clear to parents watching or participating that a lot of factors haven't changed and we may, you know, we may absolutely be in the same spot we were in the fall that we have to stick with the hybrid. But hopefully we can get to a point where we can still safely return at least some of our students in that manner.
Absolutely.
Okay, board members, was there any concerns with Erin's, you know, paragraph? And then there is a survey that will be attached. It maybe has like six questions on it, very similar to what we've sent in the past. But any concerns with her sending that out on Wednesday, tomorrow? No, 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 we're good.
No, I mean, my larger kind of questions would be more about, I think, what we do when we get the survey results back, not necessarily the survey itself, you know? And the same thing, I think, with the follow-up on the next series of grades as we start talking about that is more, you know, and to me, less about the survey results. Again, those will indicate where we're at, more about what that means from an occupancy perspective, from a social distancing perspective, and about how those timelines align with, you know, vaccinations for teachers and staff and general population and then where Epi trends are. Those are really more my concerns on that, which are kind of not survey-dependent factors. And so I think, you know, for me personally, you know, if the survey results kind of just stay similar to what we're currently seeing, people who prefer in-person would like more in-person and people who would like remote still just want remote, regardless of whether it's hybrid or full being offered, you know, there's still just remote folks. That's not the determining factor. Then, you know, I think we've got a lot of variability within the buildings that will challenge us to get everybody back in without violating our social distancing, particularly at the high school. So that's my only concern on that, one of many, I guess, on the follow-up to this.
So are the questions already, are they already prepared or for the survey or?
Yeah, yeah. So I can show them to you, Rob.
That would be great.
Okay, sure. So these are tailored to the high school, just based upon some concerns that were vocalized. So if we scroll down, they're very, I mean, most are very general. So just students' first and last name for me to help with sorting. Student's date of birth, because we have some students with very similar first and last names. So please select the preferred learning model for your 12th grader. Please note that the selection will lock your student into the learning model for the remainder of quarter three. Quarter three ends on Friday, April 2nd, if anybody's wondering when quarter three ends. And would you like the five-day in-person learning model? And in parentheses, I put no hybrid model because we would be, you know, dissolving the hybrid model going to a full five-day in-person for people who chose that. Or you can choose the full remote learning model.
Right.
I know that it's, you know, there are not as many 12th graders that take the bus, but I do need to be able to communicate to transportation if there will be students need the bus and the change of model. So one question that did come up was, does your student participate in band? Suver wanted to just get a, be able to wrap her head around some numbers because the band is very successfully being able to practice this time or at this time with social distancing. So that was a question I put in there. We also put a question in about what English classes do or is your student currently enrolled in? When we talk about content areas and capacity, English classes were on the top of the list of things to look at for capacity. So I would, I would want to just be able to easily filter for Julie and myself for those English classes to take a look at for our seniors. And if you're not currently taking one, please just tell me no.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you just scroll back up?
Sure.
A little further. Okay, right here, number four. So select the preferred learning model, please know that this, okay. So I'm wondering if the wording here, you know, needs to again include, you know, if, you know, if we're able to, you know, if we're able to accommodate this model, then that would, then that would lock them in because otherwise, right?
Yes.
But other than that, this looks really good.
Sorry, Rob, not to talk over you, but I just had the exact same thought when you asked Erin to scroll up. Completely agree with you, Erin. So like, if a parent is reading this and they didn't read your paragraph, your lead-in thoroughly enough, could just assume by selecting this, they're locking into the five-day in-person like that. We're just, we're just offering.
It's happening. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can say, you know, I'll follow my square and say, I might be one of those parents that might not necessarily read all of, all of part of that paragraph and just go right to the questions and answer them and think that I'm good to go. So that was, that was why I brought it up, but thank you.
Okay, so I'll take that language from the paragraph and I'll include some of that into the question.
Yeah, that's one of those things that I think you can't, you can't mention enough.
Yeah.
Just to be certain. Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have nothing else, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so that being said, Erin, if you could just make that adjustment to number four so that there are no, or at least much less likely chance of, you know, miscommunication, that would be great. And then you're okay to send it is what I am taking from the board. That being said, I did just let in our fifth board member, Mr. Senna Baldi. So just a heads up for everyone that he is now with us. So, and I'm jotting that down for my notes. Okay. Okay, so that brings us to our first public comment. And I'm just trying to figure out the best way to handle it. Is everybody able to raise a hand who might want to speak or put some sort of reaction in their box so that I could call on them should they desire to speak?
So there is a raise hand option. Down under reactions at the bottom of the video screen. If you click on that, it has all the emojis that everybody loves so much, but it also has raise hands.
Yeah, so any of those emojis or a raise hand would be acceptable. So if you could just, if there is, and if there's no public comment, we'll just move on. But you can indicate with any one of those emojis, that would be great. And I have a couple of screens, so I'll give you guys a minute and then I'll. And Rob Breton raised his hand.
I'm just testing it. Okay, very good.
Yes, Mr. Breton, can we?
I'm all about the technology.
I love it.
As you can see.
That was perfect. We'll just give it about 10 more seconds here. Just wanted to make sure everybody has adequate time, if, you know. Looks like, looks like we're good to go. There's, there, it does not appear to be any public comment at this point, so we will move on. That takes us down to the superintendent's report, which I believe we're actually going to be hearing from Mr. Hickey, the Executive Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you, Shannon. In your packet we sent out last night, actually, an updated expense report year-to-date. And there's a couple of things I just thought I'd bring to your attention. You might recall back in October, we talked about accessing the SPED trust in the building trust. So as you look through that report, you'll notice that some HVAC accounts are overspent, if you will. And it's simply that that project hasn't been completed and in turn, we haven't submitted to the trust. Same is true under the SPED accounts, the 299 accounts for special day school tuition and speech and language contract services. But again, we'll be submitting to the trust reimbursement there. So those are just some errors I thought I'd bring to your attention. And should any of the board members have a question about anything else or about these accounts, please let me know.
Anything from the board? No, no, okay. Did you have anything else, Bill?
No, that's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to action items and our action items involve a lot of policy. I'm just looking before we get into them. I know we're going to have a little bit of a discussion on one, possibly three. So let's take these out of order if you don't mind. Can we start with number two, approval of JLCC, which is related to, it's our headlights policy. It was just part of the spring update of, from the NHSBA and. Sorry, I'm just trying to get to the right page. I have two computers going, so bear with me. Way smokes. That JLCD is a long policy, isn't it?
JLCC is page 55.
There we go. Thank you. I just got there. I'm like, holy, we did not want to end. So again, this was just related to an update from the NHSBA. It has been run through our district nursing as we try to do with all health-related, medical-related policies. Were there, well, we could take a motion in a second and then we could entertain a discussion if that would be okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy JLCC as presented.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, so Cindy and then Sam, okay. And were there any discussion or questions related to the headlights pediculosis?
No.
Okay, so we're going to roll call it. Dennis.
Hi.
You sound great. So I would like to publicly thank Dennis and the town staff for the plowing and amazing work they did trying to, keeping everybody safe today. So thanks, Dennis. You sound a bit rough, but it's completely understandable. Dennis was an I. Rob?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Cindy?
Hi.
Chair says I. So JLCC has approved 5-0. Let's jump down to number four, approval of EBV school safety. There it is.
Motion to approve policy EBVB as written, EB as written.
Okay, we have a motion by Sam. Second by Rob. Sorry, just writing this down and just looking at my notes. Yep, again, there's, there was a legislative amendment to RSA 281A64, and that was why, why this policy needs to be updated. So were there any questions related to it? Nope. Okay, we'll roll call it. Dennis?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Cindy?
Hi.
Sorry, chair says I. EBV passes 5-0. If you can't have fun, you know.
That's right.
We'll move on then to number five, approval of EB workplace safety program and joint loss communication committee.
Go ahead, Sam.
I'll make a motion for policy EB to be approved as written for workplace safety program and joint loss management committee.
Motion by Sam, I'm sorry, who was the second?
Second.
Cindy seconded. And looking for, yep, this one had an RSA update 281-A:64. So that was the reason for this update. Any discussion? Nope. Okay, we'll roll call it. Dennis?
Hi.
You sounded better. Rob?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Cindy?
Hi.
All right, chair says I. Just to point out, we're six, seven, eight, and nine are all going to carry forward to the next meeting, even the rescindment of number nine, because it is actually attached to, I think, number seven. So six, seven, eight, and nine will move forward, but they're there for information. We'll jump back up to number one, approval of JLCD administering medication to students. Okay, I believe there is a discussion to be had relative to this one. Do we want to go ahead and have the discussion before we make a motion, or should we make the motion in second and then discuss?
Either way.
Either way is fine. So I sent over some additional language to you, Shannon, just so you had it written down in front of you, since we're doing this remotely. And so for the board's consideration, I wanted to put forward some additional language, which would require this to probably go back to policy, because looking through this policy that we have for JLCD, there's a lot of forms attached to this, and I think this would probably, my motion language here, which could turn into a motion, would probably require some different forms to be developed for this scenario, based on the fact that all of these seem to have their own type of form set. So my thought was really about the kind of dietary supplements, like lactate as an example, that requires consumption with food on administration, and the kind of lack of suitability of having to go down to a nurse's office, eat food in a nurse's office, considering that's where everyone who's sick goes, you know, in conjunction with eating. So it's really, I tried to write something that I felt would be a pretty limited use waiver, understanding all of the, you know, liability and restriction concerns, so this would have to be pretty narrowly written. So what, what I have is dietary supplements that require concomitant consumption with food, may be self-administered by students, and I had it in grades five to 12, opened a discussion there, just for purposes of this, provided that a parental and physician approval is registered with the school nurse for the current school year, that a liability waiver has been signed by the parents, and the supplement is provided as a solely single dose for student consumption and is clearly marked and/or in single-use packaging. So the language for this exception, I was aiming for to be very restrictive, not extend to OTC or prescription pharmaceutical products, restrict the age range to those who could regularly self-administer the same thing to themselves, you know, like a chewable or small tablet, would require a liability waiver, would require parental and physician approval on file, which would go to the nursing office probably for approval, would require renewal each year, and would restrict how the supplement is both provided and labeled for consumption.
So just looking at this policy, it looks like this type of supplements, would you say, would you say it would fall under number two, over-the-counter medication? Or would you say it would fall under its own kind of heading?
I was trying to create its own type of heading, so there was no confusion with other types of OTC products, you know, like Tylenol or Advil or something like that, right? Because I think, you know, something that's a dietary supplement, like a lactaid, is neutral. You know, you're not, you know, it's unlike a Tylenol or an Advil, where it might be important for a nurse to know that you took it. I mean, I'd probably say it's not a common use case, but there's probably, you know, a whole bunch of kind of rare genetic metabolic conditions where someone might have to take a certain supplement, like carnitine or something like that, right? Those are, in aggregate, maybe not totally uncommon, but individually, they're super rare. But they do occur. I mean, they could happen. I mean, there might be, I don't know enough about cystic fibrosis, you know, non-pharmaceutical medication and necessarily say what dietary would look like. There might be some dietary supplements in the CF category that might fall into this. I don't, I don't know.
Generally, those are prescription, but.
I would think so, yeah.
I would assume the kids might be taking them themselves.
Yeah, I mean, my, my, my main point would probably be, I think the most common use case for this would probably be like a lactaid or something. And, you know, so it could, you know, that allows, you know, a parent, if they want to send a kid to school and say, hey, you know, this is in your lunch pail, if you want to buy pizza now, you can, when you couldn't before, without going down to a nurse, since we have pretty limited lunchtime, Andy.
Oh, Sam, you're.
Thanks, Sam froze up.
I was going to say, is it Sam or me?
Cindy, is, is lactaid considered a medication?
It's over the counter. It's not. It's, it's, it's like an enzyme. But the, the other question that I, I'm, I generally defer to the nurses on stuff like this. If they don't like it, then I don't like it. We actually have a policy that allows children to self-administer inhalers and EpiPens grade six and up, which I didn't, I mean, I knew, but I guess I didn't realize it. I was, I was of the mindset earlier of thinking, gee, maybe lactaid, they need to go to the nurse, because that's what the nurse wants, but maybe we need to send this back to policy, get the nurses involved again, and discuss this specifically with the entire group. Because if a student can be responsible for administering an albuterol or an Atreven through their, their puffs with their nebulizer, which is pretty important medication, and so is epinephrine, and they can carry it with them and administrate, administer it to themselves at that age, then maybe lactaid isn't such a big deal.
Yeah. I think that's a good approach. And I, and I think too, one of the things I've been really good at over the last few years is taking these policies and removing forms from them. You know, I, I understand the need for forms, but I think that's more of a procedural thing. And all, you know, forms could be mentioned in a policy, but specific forms attached to it. We've been trying to get away from that in the event that, you know, the method for authorization changes, or, you know, the form itself changes, it doesn't require full action of the board to, to, you know, make those types of changes. Whereas, whereas if you have, if you have the forms attached to the policy, then it has to become a, you know, a full-blown action of the board.
Sure. So to that end, I think the purpose of the forms being with them is that they were each updated to align with the current policy, but your point is taken and, and, sorry, I'm thinking and scrolling at the same time. So I have mixed feelings about it, about, about Sam's modification. I, I think I would definitely be agreeable to this, going back to policy and asking the nursing staff to sit with us and kind of walk through it specific to this. Because the one thing that came to my mind was if we, if we wrote a policy where we just indicated dietary supplements, you know, could that open a can of worms with, and I'm trying to think of an example, but talk of like diet pills, like things that are very unhealthy for, well, I, I guess I should watch how I say that, but things that can often like what, get you, kind of ramp you up and that kind of a thing. So I'm not sure dietary.
Might be a good suggestion to just label it. One drug, one exception. If we're going to go that way, I agree, Shannon, lactaid.
Right. Just because, and again, I wish I could think of one, but like, you know, when you're.
There's a lot of dietary supplements that have to be taken with food. They want you to take it right when you sit down to eat, and that could be anything, and we don't have any control over that. So it, just for liabilities, concerns as well, we're talking about a pill that dissolves easily, that's not going to choke a child, even if it gets caught in their throat, it's going to dissolve. So I, I'm thinking that the specificity is important. If this is what the, the nurses agree to, I don't, I don't want to push a policy that the nurses disagree with. I think this is the wheelhouse, not, not ours. It's kind of sort of mine, but I would also, I really would like to bring it back. Again, if a, if a child can carry an albuterol and an Atreven and give themselves two puffs when they need it, or jab an epinephrine into themselves when there's a problem, then maybe we should be a little bit more trusting about a pill that dissolves that you just swallow with your meal, as long as it's specific.
So I think also, I'm, I'm looking at these, we, we were very specific about ages with.
The Epi, was it saying, did it say grade six to eight?
That one says grade six to eight. I think we, but, but I think if we jump up to the policy, oh yeah, we did, we did six to, it looks like it should go back anyway. We need to reread letter F. Students in grades seven through 12, which is what I remember, when, when we initially wrote this, well, we, sorry, when we initially reviewed this with the nursing staff, we didn't write this from scratch. It used to be written for grades six through 12, but since we've changed and shifted the grades in the schools, it was agreed upon by the group that it was initially written for middle school and up, which is why it started at grade six. So then this was adjusted to grade seven to still align with middle school.
Right.
So Sam's modification or request was to start in center school, correct, Sam?
I did, but I, you know, I wrote that in isolation without having access to talking to the nursing staff or to board being on the policy committee. So I think, you know, whatever we think within those other policies, where we say, oh, we trust people to self-administer, I probably think we should just be consistent across the board with what age that is, because there's probably some developmentally appropriate age at which if I were a school nurse and I'm not, that they would probably say, oh, that is, that's the age at which I would recommend. And so like I said initially, I wrote that for the purposes of discussion, but I think that's the part that I'm most fine to kind of change. The other elements that I really wanted to think about were things like, single use versus just bringing your bottle of, you know, whatever and take it, you know, even if it's, you know, like, it shouldn't be, you know, even, even if you have, you know, let's say something like lactaid, I wouldn't necessarily, whether it's that or, or anything else that you could think of to go with this policy, think that I would say, hey, bring, bring your whole bottle in, because then there's no control over the dispensation of the product.
Right.
So with this one being single use and labeled, you know, it at least gives you that, you know, it is single use. I, I think that's consistent with what we had for the EpiPen as well, right? It's a single use, so you're not like saying, bringing, you know, four EpiPens and, yeah, I try to be consistent.
Only one, you.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so if, if the board is comfortable with it, we'll take this back to policy, sit down with, again, the nurses in the district, at, at least a couple of them, I don't know that we'll sit down with all of them to be completely, you know, transparent, there's at least two at each school. So we'll sit down with at least a couple of them and vet this, vet this out, discuss specific to lactaid and maybe seeing where they're at with it, what information they have in their profession as to, as to why they feel the way they do, whichever way that happens to go, and what that language should look like if we do pursue a change to this policy. Is that amenable to everybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
And Dennis is muted. I'm going to assume Dennis being quiet means it's okay.
Or that he fell asleep.
Or that he fell asleep.
From hours of plowing.
Yes. All right, so we'll take JLCD back to policy to just, again, specifically vet this out for lactaid. Okay, got it. And then finally, number three, we have on here approval of JL CJ concussions and head injuries. All right, still trying to get there. This was brought forward, there was revisions to RSA 200:63. And then within the district, in addition to amending the policy with the RSA, we've also vetted the policy out through our athletic director and athletic trainer, and of course, the policy committee, and everybody is comfortable with the way it is written. However, I did hear some questions from a board member earlier, which is why I held this, in case we wanted to have a discussion about, about those questions. So, so Cindy, I'm going to pick on you. Did you have, you're, you're muted, so just wanted to give you the heads up, but.
No, I'm all set.
You're good? Okay.
Yeah, I, I can quickly discuss that there, there might have been some concern about removal from play for somebody who had a concussion. And then there may be instances where perhaps a child has had a concussion and previously, and needs to be removed from play because they're getting symptoms from a prior concussion. But if you go back down to, to return to play, it's kind of included in the return to play. I just had a little bit of concern about maybe it not being in the removal from play, if somebody had a concussion from some other different activity that wasn't school-related, and came back in and started having recurrence of symptoms, if it wasn't written underneath the, the return to play. I had some concerns about that, but I, I don't think it's a problem. I think it's okay that it's under, under removal from play. And that might not make a lot of sense unless you, you know, really delve into the policy, but.
Yes, I follow you completely, but I have delved into this policy with you.
You, you understand what I'm saying, but.
I do.
You, you think, you have, we've already had, and I think Cory knows a little bit about it as well, you think that including it in the return to play is, covers it?
I, I, I do. I, I'm personally comfortable with, with it as written, but of course.
No, I, I think I'm okay. I think I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's one of those things where if it was really important to you and, and the majority of the board to have it written twice in the policy, we can do that. It's just one of those things where it is in here, it is indicated, our coaches and everybody associated overseeing our athletic events should, you know, be cognizant of the policy, of course. So I would have to anticipate that they would be aware of it, and of course, I know they go through concussion training protocols and such too. So again, knowing as, as much, kind of as we've learned over the past couple of times we've looked through this policy, I'm comfortable, but I, but again, if the rest of the board wanted it in a couple of times.
Yeah, it's okay. I think that we've kind of beat this dead horse. We've, we've gone over this policy. It's been months. So, I mean, I read through it again, and I, and I looked at the return to play section, and it is in there. So it does more than just imply that if you've had a previous concussion, then you're having. more than just imply that if you've had a previous concussion, then you're having recurring symptoms, you get removed from play. It's not under the removal from play, but it's there. And, um, I think, I think that there's just a lot of parents that worry about repeated, um, head injuries and repeated concussions. And I, I, we do have a history of some kids who have had repeated concussions and we just want to make sure that they're safe. And if they have any recurrent symptoms, that they're pulled out of the game and they're not just given a Motrin and, and said, and pushed back in. So.
Yeah. I mean, to that point, of course, we talked about health and safety repeatedly now with COVID-19, but that goes across everything. Health and safety is always the priority for, in all situations.
Everything and, and head injuries are such sketchy, scary things and, um, repeated head injuries can do profound damage to a child's brain. So this is just a really important policy and we just, you know, we need to get it right. And it looks fine.
Okay. And I see a hand raised by Mr. Breton.
So I'm comfortable with the policy too. The one question that I have is, is there a different policy? Maybe I'm forgetting, but is there a different policy for concussions and head industry, head injuries, he said, uh, that aren't as a result of intramural sports or, um, team sports, but do happen in the course of the, of a school day, i.e. in PE?
So this.
Or outside the school day? Like on a electric skateboard?
Well, I mean, that's something different, right? Because that's a, that's a, uh, you know, a choice, right? But I mean, I'm talking about, you know, uh, a class of kids participating in, I don't want to get Mr. Senna Baldi going, but say dodgeball game or something, some kind of a, you know, physical activity where, you know, somebody, you know, either hits their head on the floor, hits, it's, you know, bumps into another student, et cetera, and now is potentially concussed. Then I would, I would hope all these same things would apply, but this really is tailored to strictly intramural and school sponsored athletic programs that, so far as to, as to define a student athlete. So i- is somebody participating in PE that gets an injury, are they considered a student athlete or how are we covering that?
Yes. So we have, um, multiple policies related to, um, oh, I'm trying to think of tie a specific titles, but related to injuries, how to report injuries, um, what is the protocol for, for like treatment of injuries? Who do you go to? Who do you get? What do you do? So we do have multiple policies related to that. And then the one piece this does cover that's, um, again, a little more general is that paragraph related to academic issues and concussed students. It does touch on the fact that concussions can happen in both school related and non-school related activity and that, you know, staff needs to be mindful, teachers need to be, should be notified. Um, report to the school nurse if student appears to have difficulty with tasks, et cetera, et cetera. So our, we do have multiple policies that follow similar guidance. Um, basically it covers everything, but we have a first aid policy. We have an injury policy. We have a reporting injury policy. We have, we do, we have a, we kind of cover the gamut. As enough to say we cover everything. I mean, hopefully we, we do, hopefully we cover most everything, but sometimes things get overlooked. So I would never want to over promise, but we do have several policies in place.
Okay.
Any other, uh, in FYI, Dennis needed to jump off. Um, so we're back to the four of us. Uh, any other concerns, questions, anything related to the concussion policy? No, no. Okay. So we need a motion and a second to approve JL CJ as presented.
So I'll make a motion to approve JL CJ concussion and head injuries as presented.
Okay. And Rob is seconding. Um, okay. So we'll roll call it the four of us. Rob?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Cindy?
Hi.
Right. Chair says I. JL CJ approved four zero. JLCD will go back to policy. Six through nine will be moved forward to the next, uh, agenda for approval and or rescindment based on whatever is indicated. That brings us to acceptance of donations under action items. Um, Mr. Breton, if you.
Yep. Yep, absolutely. So there are four donations. They're all from the same organization, uh, and all for various schools. I just want to give, give them kind of a little bit of a shout out. So they're, they're called Donors Choose. And Donors Choose is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that helps public school teachers get resources for their classrooms. So that is the organization that has made the following donations, and I would like to make a motion to accept those donations with gratitude. So again, from donorschoose.org, Lego Education Spike Prime Set and Expansion Set for the Windham Middle School Lego Robotics Team One in the amount of $481. Lego Education Spike Prime Set and Expansion Set for the Windham Middle School Lego Robotics Team Two, also for $481 value. Lego Education Spike Prime Set and Expansion Set for Windham Middle School Lego Robotics Team, $481.35. Dash Robot for Windham Middle School Digital Literacy Program in the amount of $360.76.
Okay. So we had a motion from Rob with, with the information. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sam. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll roll call it. Rob? Sam? Cindy? Here says I for zero for the donations with gratitude. Thank you. That brings us to our final public comment of the evening. So we'll handle it the way the first public comment went where if you have a comment or a question, if you could go ahead and indicate, um, yourself with an emoji found at the bottom, either a raised hand or any type. Looks like we're back down to one page, at least as far as I can see. So that's helpful. As far as easily readable.
Jenny.
Oh, thank you. Uh, so we'll go down to Jenny. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I'm a, a parent of Wyndham's high school students and I'm wondering if there is a policy regarding the timeframe under which the teachers are entering grades. I've just been through a couple of quarters now where, um, the students are entering mid, my kids are entering midterms without actually having papers and assignments graded. Um, so they don't necessarily have the benefit of knowing the grade going in or anything that they would need to correct going in and learn differently. So I'm wondering if there's a school policy related to that.
So, uh, we give our teachers the autonomy to, um, decide how to teach their, their students and what type of, um, you know, methods kind of work best for them and to figure it out with their class. So, but getting back to as far as, is there a, a formal school board policy related to how the time period for grades? The answer is no. We would, I mean, the expectation would be that they would be graded within, and this is where you get into not black and white, what would, what would be considered a reasonable amount of time. So uh, it is concerning, of course, when when you hear things like that. Um, Dr. Beck, are you available?
Yeah. And that's more procedural too. We, we are more policy based and more 30,000 foot level. And we generally leave the procedural, um, management to administration, but Dr. Beck would be able to answer that better.
Sure. Um, so there's not a school board policy on that, Jenny. Um, there are some practices at the high school, but if you, I can give you my contact information and I'd be happy to kind of have a conversation with you, um, to kind of really drill down to your concerns.
Okay, that'd be great. Um, do you want to put it in the chat? How do you want to do that?
Oh yeah, I'll put it right in the chat. Great idea. Thank you.
I, I, I guess if any other parents out there listening have concerns similar to what you voiced, um, Jenny, to, to contact, I guess probably the principal of the individual school. That's probably the right, the right person to go to, I would assume. And I know, I know people have brought up that concern to me and I've directed them to principals at individual schools. So hopefully I, I just know personally, I've had a few people reach out to me with that exact same concern or that the information was maybe not entered into power school or unified classroom, whichever one where you can check, you know, necessarily, uh, grades that some teachers weren't entering everything in, but some they just didn't see anything entered in yet for some of the different classes that their kids were in.
Great point.
Yep. Yeah. And I get to, to echo you, Sam, I, this isn't the first time I've heard this. It, it hasn't. I haven't heard it so often that I think it's a pervasive issue. I think it, you know, maybe it's a couple of teachers who are maybe struggling a little bit. I'm not sure, but hopefully Dr. Beck then will take this information. I'm sure she'll dig a little deeper with Jenny and then, you know, kind of go from there with it and, and hopefully resolve the issue so that we don't have to consider putting in a policy regarding that.
Yeah, thank you. And my kids are, my kids are special needs, so that timeframe to be able to correct with the teachers is really important. So thank you for that.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I think many of us, Jenny, have had that problem with our students and our students', um, assignments and, and especially going into midterms or finals and not knowing what your grade point average is or your grade averages in that particular class and not knowing what you need to correct when you're studying. Uh, I, I think that there, there are also some issues with students, um, putting in late assignments and the late assignments are something that teachers have to go back and grade and sometimes those aren't done in a timely fashion because they're dealing with all the other grades, um, in those particular classes. So I, I, again, I, I think that a lot of parents have this concern. So I appreciate the fact that you're raising it so that we can continue to look at it.
Yeah. And I think, you know, just echoing that, I definitely share that concern. I've definitely had that. I think particularly with remote, but also particularly with kids who are in special education, uh, you know, or whether 504 or IEP needs where you as a parent have to kind of support them a little bit more or at certain grade levels, you know, um, at home. And I think we made a, we made a big deal, I think, when we talked about, you know, the initial kind of hybrid model, there was some language in there about, uh, someone needing to be kind of home and around the student to act as kind of an educational coordinator for the student at home. Um, and I think that language probably really applies to also how that parent is receiving information as well, that we have to make sure that they're receiving the right information to act in that capacity or they're unable to do so.
And with, with remote, it's difficult for the teacher and the student to get together. If there's a reason for the delay, everything's done electronically. And if you're not, if your, your student or your, as a parent, aren't up on the electronics and know how to get into unified classroom and know how to, to see where the comments are or what, whether they've commented on certain things that have been shared. It, it's a whole different game now with, with COVID and, and all this remote. I think it was a little bit less pervasive when we were in person and the kids could actually have conversations with their teachers every day.
Um, okay. So thank you for that, Jenny. And is there any other public comment, questions, concerns? We'll just give it up. We'll give it a few seconds, uh, just to make sure everybody has an opportunity. Um, and I did see Jenny, Dr. Beck did put her email in the chat. So hopefully you were able to grab that. And not seeing any other public comments. So that brings us to a final board member comments or discussion, if there are any. Um, Cindy, do you have anything?
I'm not at the moment. I might think of something, but.
Okay. Sam? Anything? You're good. Uh, Rob, you're muted, but I wasn't sure if you had any.
I, I will gladly yield my time to Mrs. Finn.
Okay. Um.
I, I just, um, you know what? I'll say a quick, I just wanted to thank everybody for, for what we've been dealing with and coming back off of vacation and coming back off of weeks of remote and getting back into hybrid and it, every time something happens in our district, our lives change. You, one minute we're in school, the next minute we're not. Now we're looking at potentially the senior class being able to go back to school in person. That's just the beginning. We're, we're going to look at everything and, and every student and we're going to teach, we're going to treat each school individually. But we are turning on a dime, um, every week, every day. And administration and the, the teachers and our staff and even our custodial staff, our paraprofessionals, our, our nursing staff are just doing an incredible job. And if I, I missed anybody, I'm sorry. All of you out there that are doing this for our students to make sure they're getting the best education they can as safely as they possibly can. Can't tell you how much for me and my family that I appreciate that. I just had to personally say that.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely echo that sentiment. A lot of people making good things happen.
Amen.
Okay, um, so we will be coming up to adjourn here in, in a, in a second. Um, the only thing I wanted to remind people is again, this Friday, uh, February 5th is the deliberative session. Seven PM at the high school in the auditorium. And as Mrs. Dunn mentioned earlier, if we have a typical sized crowd this year, there is plenty of, of room to social distance. Masks will be required if you're going to enter the auditorium. And if you would like to have a vote, should anything come up to be voted on, you need to be present, um, to participate in that manner. However, Zoom can be utilized if you simply have a question or need a clarification or have a comment. So if you have any questions again, related to deliberative, don't hesitate to reach out to us between now and Friday. Um, hope to see you guys there at seven o'clock. And how about a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at nine oh six PM.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Yeah. Oh, Rob seconded, but he's mute. So Sam.
We're going to roll call.
But you knew I did it anyway.
Communicate in many ways.
Yes.
So we're going to roll call it. Rob?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Uh, Cindy? Was that an I? Yeah.
That was an I and a W.
Chair says I four zero. This meeting, um, is adjourned and we'll have this recording up. Are you raising your hand again, Mr.?
No, that was, that was my I for the journey. In case I was muted.
We will have this, uh, recording up, uh, on the district website in a couple of days for anybody who may have missed it. So thank you all for attending tonight and have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you, everybody.